Ninety Bear Street Group, urban, local, downtown city, Ninety Bear Street Assembly, Ninety Bear Street Lot 20, Lots 12, 13, 14.01, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.01. DB-Dash 202, DB-Dash 208. Preliminary and final major site plan application in order to construct a new 22-story mixed-use building containing 331 apartments with an efficient upper-floor residential floors of prior approval. The 2017 approval contained a 22-story structure with retail office and 255 residential apartments.
Members of the Board, Thomas F. Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, Ninety Bear Street, over in New Orleans, Liberty Company. I won't repeat the tutorial of what the chairman just said, but just a little background on this application, and I think the Board will recall those members who were members there. This building was originally approved in 2017. It had a larger office component, and it was 20 stories. For a number of variety of reasons, that building did not materialize. So it was a change in strategy. We came back in 2018, and was ultimately approved in 2019. It reduced the office component and lowered the building by several stories. The parking facility remained the same, and it still remains the same. As a result of those two changes, we have an approved building today that's 18 stories, 255?
Two fifty-five.
255 parking spaces, which was previously approved. And we're now back in order to reconfigure the building, to add some residential units, go up several more, actually four more stories, but the building itself is essentially the same building that was previously approved. You should know that my client has perfected all of those approvals, has posted the bonds with the city, and has the outside agency approvals. But we're back this evening because we think this plan is a better plan overall for the development in that area and from the city's perspective. There are several housekeeping findings that I think we need to put on the record here, and that is that when those approvals were previously done, there was a lot of width variance that was approved. Now, that lot is the same lot we were developing, so that lot with variance still is valid. There was also a sky plane setback variance that was approved that still exists in this building. It's been changed slightly, but that variance itself is actually already approved. I think for the record, there is a change to that setback variance, so technically we consider it a new variance, but the board, especially Board members who have been on here previously, should realize that that setback variance was previously approved. There were also two other items, and I know that Tony in the engineering report points them out. One has to do with the driveway entrance requirements, which we consider to be design waivers. They were previously approved in the original application as part of what we call design waivers. They're exactly the same in this building. The same holds true for the size of parking stalls. As you know, the ordinance requires nine by eighteen. The zoning ordinance plus also the engineering design standards provide for that, but there was previously approved a waiver for spaces less than nine by eighteen. And I know it's pointed at in Tony's report, but those were previously granted, and they have not changed. The garage is exactly the same, those parking spaces are the same, the driveway entrances are the same. So from our perspective, I think as a housekeeping matter, it would make sense if the Board were to see fit to grant those to put them in the record again, but it's our position as the applicant, they're already approved. So that we're essentially here for purposes of modifying what was originally the preliminary and final site plan that was granted. I think when you'll see from the testimony that's being provided, you're looking at the building, it's essentially the same building, it's just a little higher. One of the big advantages that will be pointed at in our testimony is that the original design from an engineering perspective of this building would have had all of the stormwater management go into New Street, which then goes into Drift Street. And we all know the problems that the city has had with flooding in Drift Street, and obviously recently with very serious condition. What we've been able to accomplish with this design is we modified all of the stormwater management, not only subsurface, but also with the building design and how the building stormwater flows, and how all of the stormwater goes into Bayard Street and is discharged out of the site through the Bayard Street system. So we would think that's important for the Board to understand the significance of that because it's a significant amount of stormwater that if it were to continue in New Street and Drift Street, continues to have an aggravating problem. We now are going to have the good fortune, and the city of the good fortune, of having a lot of that stormwater now be directed elsewhere. So overall, that's kind of an overall view of the project. My client will give you kind of a basic overview of his vision of this. I will provide architectural testimony and engineering testimony. You'll note that we did provide to you a traffic reviewing report, which was updated in September. John Korak, or one of our traffic consultants is here this evening. It was not my intent to call him for testimony. Again, as I said, the parking garage, the number of parking spaces, the configuration is exactly the same, but he is here to answer any questions that the Board publicly have with regards to that. In an effort to try to save time, again, you've had to record the report as part of the record, and so we won't be providing additional testimony. So with that as an overview, unless the Board has any questions for me, I will call Bob Paulus for testimony.
Let me just do one housekeeping. Any member of the Board have any conflict with this application? See enough, thank you. Just wanted to say enough.
And by the way, since I just saw it in the last application, under the circumstances in this application, there's no devariances, so we don't comply affirm.
Okay.
I just want to point that out because that's unusual. And in fact, it is kind of unusual when you think about here before the zoning board, without the jurisdictional typical requirements for a zoning board, but that's because, or you retain jurisdiction because you did the original approval. So retaining jurisdiction, but there's no devariances here.
So how many folks do you need?
Just the majority.
That's the majority.
That's the majority. Yeah, in this case, it's pretty good. So if you could square off.
Can you please state your name, start your last name for the record?
Robert G. Paulus, P.A., U.L., U.S.
Do you swear affirm to hold him for not being both present?
Yes, I do.
Bob, you're the, obviously, the principal of the applicant, Ninety Bear, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're familiar with the entire application, and you've done a number of projects in New Brunswick, so.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. If you would, I know you want to give an overview of the project, probably speak a little bit to the history of how we got here, and so I'm not going to ask any questions. I mean, just feel free.
Yeah, I'll try and keep it brief because we've gone through this project before. The complex at Ninety Bayard Street, under this reapplication of its prior approvals, will be 22 stories. It will be a mixed-use project. It will contain 2,190 square feet of ground floor retail space and 7,110 square feet of ground floor office space. It will have three levels of parking and 18 levels of apartments, with the apartments rising above the parking structure. The parking structure contains 285 parking spaces, with 11 on the ground floor and 274 parking spaces on levels two, three, and four.
Just for the record, so we understand, that meets the parking requirements in the zone, so the parking that's being provided satisfies the city zoning ordinance.
Thank you. So the vehicles that enter into that parking area will enter and exit from Kirkpatrick Street, and also there's an access point on New Street. So the new use main building entrance will be on the corner of Bayard and Kirkpatrick. It will have a cityscape crossed down Kirkpatrick, and with the Westerly elevation facing onto New Street. And again, the main entrance to the 331 apartments will be at Bayard and Kirkpatrick at the There will be 331 apartments. It will be consisting of 54 studios, 191 one-bedroom apartments, and 86 two-bedroom apartments, and they'll range in size from 495 square feet to 1,100 square feet. The leasing in the management office will be located on the fifth floor. There will be an outdoor pool on the fifth floor also. These are all the original components of the prior approvals that we've received. Nothing has changed, nothing has been deleted. There'll be a sky roof deck on the 22nd floor with a skylounge at the 26th floor, 26th, 7th, 22nd floor, thank you. The residential area will also have the same amenities such as conference, meeting rooms, fitness center, yoga studio, dog runs, moving sprint. Under the present interior floor plan, the project will have studios and smaller one-bedroom apartments. The studios and the smaller one-bedroom apartments will meet the present market demands. The studio and the smaller one-bedroom apartment offer an alternative in housing choice in this development, and still at the premium location with all the amenities that the building offers. Many of the renters are choosing smaller apartments over sharing with roommates. They prioritize their workplace, their health, and their privacy, which the smaller units allow that, and also add a lower price point for the rental. As indicated, we have responded, addressed, or clarified the city of New Brunswick's engineer, his report dated August 15, 2023, along with his report of September 21st. We have, will give testimony to addressing his concerns raised in his report. We've also reviewed the report of September 21st, and all his post-approval requirements are acceptable to the applicant, and other items will be addressed in testimony tonight. And as Mr. Kelso pointed out, the roof drainage has been redesigned to change the structural members and add additional interior roof drains to redirect approximately one acre of drainage, which was originally draining into, under the prior approval, to New Street, which then flows down to Drift Street. By the redesign of the storm sewer, which was worked out between Meridian Engineering and the architect, and your engineer, the now flow will be all moved towards Bayard Street connection, keeping no flow from this project going into New Street and then down onto the Drift Street area. So that should be help with the drainage issues, and tonight we'll have testimony in detail from our professionals. We have reviewed the Big Nail Planning Consultant Report of August 15. We have no issues with that report, and comply with them, have revised plans all the way on testimony and tonight.
Any other further questions for that?
Any member of the Board, a Board professional, have any questions for this?
Yeah, my most recent report is September 21st, so.
Yeah, we got it 3:30 this afternoon. Playing the time.
We will address all those concerns and comments in that report.
Frankly, for the record, there really was nothing in the report that really required much response to. It was very similar to the August report, just reaffirming a lot of what the findings were, and everything you said complies.
Right.
Just one question, Mr. Paulus. The additional 76 apartment buildings that are increased from first project plan, you have 331 now, what's 255 previous to this?
Yes, that's probably 76 additional units.
Do you know the breakdown, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, studio?
Yeah, you don't have 12 more studios, and 44 more of one-bedrooms, and two bedrooms. But it's important to note that the mix also includes smaller one-bedroom units in order to provide a lower price point on the rentals and to provide different type of housing that the market is pushing towards. The market is going towards studio and smaller bedrooms, and the data that we get in show that that should be incorporated into the mix that we're proposing for this development.
Any other Board member, Board professional? Nope, see enough?
Thank you. Mr. Steven Schott?
Can you please state your name, start your last name for the record?
Last name, Steven Schott, S-C-H-O-C-H.
Do you swear affirm to hold him for not being both present?
I did.
You have been before the Board before, correct?
Many times.
Have you been on the same journey since last time you've been before the Board?
Nope, all film good stuff. Thank you.
Steven, if you could, rather than me asking specific questions, can you do a run-through of the building, give us all the highlights, and I know we have a board.
Sure, we have one new exhibit that was not, and a miniature copy is going around to Board members. Want this marked A1? And good evening again, but this is kind of a unique situation where this is the third time substantially the same building has been presented. I'm going to focus primarily on things that have changed, so that you have a good sense of that. Exhibit A1, we put together because it shows comparison of the rendering from the most recent approval, where it was 18 stories, to the current approval. What has happened in each of these iterations, the building itself, the high-rise, basically they're composed of the element of the base, the shaft of the building, and the top. The only thing that's really changed over all this time, it hasn't been the base. Ground floor has remained the same footprint, the same circulation, the same mix of non-residential commercial uses and building services, and the parking entrance. The next three floors will always been structured parking. That base has always kind of stayed the same. What was originally approved had a very tall, 25-foot-high floor with 26,000 square feet of office space. That went away, and shaft dropped down. That's how it got to 18 stories. When that happened, we didn't also change the base to reduce the number of cars. So when we reduced the parking demand for 26,000 square feet of office space, we maintained the parking provision, which is why we can come back today and say, we can increase the number of units, not office tenants, which had a lot of transient daily parking, but we have, but we're increasing back up additional floors. Again, the top of the building hasn't changed. It's always really been kind of in the shaft of the building. That's kind of the nature of high-rises. So the same footprint of what had been a residential floor before, simply you add in more layers in the middle, and the top goes up. Today, the building network proposing at 22 stories is 255 feet tall. The original 2017 application was 243 feet tall. We're only 12 feet higher. Even though we're coming back from the last one, which had gotten shorter, we're only 12 feet higher than the originally approved building. So I say that so that you can keep in mind that parking has all been maintained through all that time, and the, one of the key drivers of that parking, the office, had been removed, and the bulk of the building is pretty much basically the same.
But just for the record, the height that we're proposing is in accordance with the zoning ordinance?
Yes, the height of 255 feet is significantly less than, I agree, than 300 is the allowable in the zone. So I'm reviewing my notes, not to be redundant to what Bob did, which was half the architectural testimony of numbers and things like that, but he was spot-on in terms of the number of units and the mix, and things like that, and I can certainly go and drill down more on that. I do want to speak a little bit, where's my architectural report?
Right there, behind you.
They've got everyone. And this is not a new exhibit, this is simply the plans that you have been provided. I do want to speak a little bit to the way the ground floor works. Bayard Street on the left side of the board, Kirkpatrick Street across the path. What you have is what we have done before. This goes in part to one of the engineers' comments about defensible design and things like that, where the project really does embody many of these design principles by creating a strong public space on the corner, easing off that corner for good sightlines around. We have office spaces, lobby space running along this entire area, so that there's good clean sightlines between the public and the enclosed spaces. You have very clear points of circulation and access to the building. There's very little in terms of parking at the ground floor, there's only 11 spaces on the ground floor, and then you have the ones up above. That's primarily maybe some handicap parking, short-term parking for the offices. We actually not only meet the parking, we have a slight surplus of the parking requirement going from, I think, one of the questions earlier about package delivery. The intention here would be not to have trucks stopping on Kirkpatrick Street and coming in, but by managing one or two of these spaces that we had in surplus of the requirement for, say, 15-minute parking, an Amazon truck can come and come in through the back door to the front desk. Behind that front desk is a very large package room that is basically a secure area for receiving of packages. Also, up at Kirkpatrick Street, they have a loading area. At the, behind that loading area is the trash compactor. That serves every one of the floors up above, so every floor, people take their trash to a chute area. That can be, there's one for recycling, single-stream recycling, one for regular refuse, comes down, is compacted. So we have, literally had a drive-in loading area. That loading area and the package room can easily accommodate multiple dumpsters. There was a comment made by the folks that, that comment on trash and recycling, that three two-yard containers maybe should be needed. We can have, I'm showing three here, easily, there's more, there's enough room for six, maybe eight of them there, so that we have the capacity to easily manage the trash, which is all going to be private pickup. So that's off-street, not going to have big trash trucks sitting in Kirkpatrick Street while we roll out dumpsters and things like that. That's all going to happen in-house. So I think that's important, to just be a refresher on the way this all works. There's also an area on the ground floor which is a secure indoor area for bicycle storage. And I think it was commented that the capacity for the bicycle storage does meet the code requirement, so people don't have to be bringing bicycles into the lobby and up the elevators and things like that, that does happen in some buildings. Here we'll have the traffic coming in from either of the entrances, or even from a street entrance, and you've got the ability to have locked and secure bicycle storage. I'm not going to necessarily go through all of the amenities and the things upstairs. Bob talked about the floor immediately above the garage is still your primary amenity floor. It has a few units on it, but there are many spaces, there's some approximately 10,000 square feet of various amenity spaces that have remained the same since the original approval, including part, a portion of the top of the garage that becomes an outdoor terrace at that level. And then all the way to the top, you can kind of see it in the back corner, there's a portion of the very top floor that was originally conceived as a sky deck. It remains that way, and one of the nice things about that is in a high-rise situation, you have some units that have great view, some units that have good view, and here you're really not going to have a bad view, but every unit gets to be, have the ability to go all the way to the top and enjoy the best view. So it's very much a shared common amenity that will really speak for the marketplace. I'll also just simply reaffirm that while it's still very conceptual in design, we did take a look at how the intention was to manage roof water, and by manipulating some of the drainage slopes on the roof, we were able to change the locations of where those inlets were, so that they brought closer to Kirkpatrick, closer to Bayard, and then through the piping system, we were able to identify a location that we can bring the roof water down from the building in a way where last school was going to speak next, was able to take it, again, not to New Street, but over to Bayard Street, and that was in direct response to some of these comments. The last thing I kind of want to really focus on here, explain the sky plane, and this is, this is on.
I don't think this is.
This is A2, right?
A2.
Now, this is actually included in the.
Oh, it is.
A15 of the package that was given. This is not a new exhibit. So this one doesn't need to be marked. But what we wanted to do with this exhibit was to show you in very clear graphic form how the sky plane works, and how on New Street, the sky plane goes up, and none of the building comes into the sky plane. Largely, that's because, you know, Elijah's Kitchen building is right on the corner there, so we're pretty far back from New Street. Kirkpatrick Street is where we had the sky plane variation previously granted. You can see that a piece of that is down low. That's the bulk of the garage. Again, the bulk of the garage, there's very little you can do with a garage to shave a few feet off of it. You shave a few feet off of a garage, and traffic circulation and parking doesn't work. And then as that goes, continues up, there was a portion of this area that is a little closer to Kirkpatrick Street that encroaches on the sky plane. A larger portion of the building that's set back is still completely behind the sky plane. Again, this was all discussed and approved in the original application. The original application, at its maximum peak, the sky plane had an encroachment of approximately 28 feet. The sky plane of what we're showing here today is approximately 28 feet. So we're 12 feet taller, about 28 feet, so it's very, very similar in its mass to what was originally approved. I simply wanted to reinforce that. I can go with a further detail? Oh, over on Bayard, what you have is, this is a slight area here, just the very top floor on Bayard, you have an encroachment of four and a half feet of the sky plane. So in summary, it's very similar as a building mass as was originally approved. It is very, certainly very similar in terms of square footage and program. It simply has more units, less office space than originally approved, and again, the parking that we have maintained all along is sufficient, does meet all the standard, the current requirements of the code.
Steve, there's one comment with regard to testimony regarding the generator.
Oh, okay. The generator, the generator exists. The generator exists actually behind the building, so it's screened from public view. It's approximately mid-block behind the building, and there's a service door and a portion of the property that we're not using in this back area. So generator, emergency generators like this, this is not intended to be a generator that provides power for the whole building. You know, this is not a power plant, this is an emergency services generator to really service the elevators as a successful means of egress during a power. really service the, the elevators as a successful means of egress, so during a power failure, the elevators still work, and the emergency lighting. So it's a relatively light load compared to the overall, the overall building load itself. These kinds of generators generally run at a, at a sound level of between 65 and 75 decibels. That's approximately the same as your average gas lawnmower or, or your, your leaf blower type of thing. And it runs in cycles about 20 to 30 minutes a week in order to maintain its, its surface. That's, that's scheduled by building management, it's often done weekends, midday, it's not run in the middle of the night where you're waking anybody up, but it's very common for, it's, for, for any generator of this type.
And I believe from the engineer's comments, we'll, we will comply with the New Jersey Noise Control Regulations.
Yes, yes, we will.
I have a question. What's the fuel for the generator? Because I'll just go ahead and, when we, we did our zoning ordinance at the beginning of the year, we said that you couldn't do diesel generators except for in the industrial part of town, so we would have to, natural gas.
It would be, it would be natural gas presuming, presuming that natural gas is accepting, that, that's not a zoning issue as much as a building code issue. But the building official must accept natural gas as an uninterrupted alternative power supply. That's, that's part of the International Building Code. It's been commonly done here in, in New Brunswick and throughout the state. I don't, don't have any concern with that, but it's intended to be a natural gas generator.
Yeah, I just wanted to flag it, that's all.
Thank you.
Steve, I would just ask you, one of the comments from the engineer with respect to the crime prevention requirements with regard to-
Yeah, the crime prevention through environmental design. I've mentioned that briefly at the ground level in terms of the sightlines, and effectively what that is, is a, it's a philosophy to create more safe spaces. And it applies differently to different kinds of development. In low-rise community type of development, a lot of it has to do with the more defensible design, eyes on the street, a lot of front doors, that kind of thing. In a high-rise situation, certainly the ground floor at, at where, where pedestrians are meets a lot of those natural sightline types of things. So it's very much in keeping with the, the crime prevention, you know, philosophies. The other main area that these philosophies would apply to would be on the garage levels because nobody wants a big, dark, scary garage. So, a garage level. So a couple, a couple ways that these, this garage layout does really respond to that. Number one, you've got a lot of clear sightlines. And that's, that's a primary thing. In addition to that, the intention is to, to put in security cameras that are monitored throughout this and adequately light this space. Nobody wants to have a, a, a dark garage. So this will be ultimately lit when we can. And, you know, there are the, the lobby areas. I couldn't think of the word lobby. So they're lobby, the lobby area is central to the, to the overall plan. Not exact in the middle, but it's pretty centralized to the plan. So with these kinds, the kind of circular circulation and the clean sightlines going through the building, these things, and, and that combined with a, a security camera that is monitored, that really does meet the, the tenants of CPTED as it applies to a high-rise condition.
Okay, I have no further questions, Chris.
And the board, board professional, any questions to this witness?
Where would the charging stations for the cars be?
So as you, as you look through the plans, all the charging stations, that, there are 49 of them in, in the, in the garage. Those spaces are basically marked EV, electric vehicle. They're often clustered together, they're closer to, towards the elevator core, a little bit of incentive, you want a better parking space, drive an electric vehicle. And it, just from a practical matter, it helps to gain those electrical feeds and stack them in the same places. So they're on each floor of the garage, so there are a few on each floor, but they're generally in the, this core on those floors. Some of them have, by, by code, they have to be for the handicap spaces as well, but that's where they, where they'll be, primarily in the middle of the plan, not around the perimeter of the plan.
Is that parking garage going to be sprinkled at all?
Oh, yes. The, the entire building is foot, is fully fire suppressed and, and, you know, this, this is serious high-rise construction. It'll have full standpipes, you know, storage connections or, and a full sprinkler system throughout. Now, were, this is an open ventilating garage, were it not to have something built on top of it, it would be allowed to not have sprinklers. But because you have something built on top of it, that the code then requires the garage itself to be sprinkled. So there'd be a dry system in the garage and a wet system up, up above.
But the parking structure for, like, I guess, the openings for, to go outside and all that, you know, and not really for doorways, but is there going to be fencing or something there?
Yes, yeah, you can-
I, I can kind of see it.
You can kind of see them in the rendering, you can certainly see them on the elevations that there are fall protection grades, so nobody wants anybody, like, either-
I know what we're not-
Either intentionally or unintentionally dropping outlets to Kirkpatrick Street, that, that's not going to happen.
Okay. Any other questions?
How many kilowatts of that generator?
Excuse me?
How many kilowatts of that generator, talking about?
It hasn't been fully designed. I would expect it would be approximately in the 75 to 100 KW. But something, probably something in, in that area to run the, again, it's just emergency lighting and elevator. That's typically what I see in buildings like this, but where the, the electrical design of the specific components hasn't been done yet.
So you're, never mind. Just for the electric, like, for the, the bikes specifically, because I know you mentioned there's cyclists and everything, the charging stations for the bicycles, like, are bicycles being the same place as the charging stations for the cars, or will they be in a different place?
I don't know that we have charging for bikes.
Just a regular outlet?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, to the extent that bikes need-
Well, just be like, maybe, maybe in like, near residential areas, then more of the, where you keep the bicycles.
Then, to the extent that we do, do bike charging, it would be in that bike storage room.
Yeah, those type of amenities, we would build them right into the program. There should be outlets in that bike area. Even if you're doing repairs on your bikes, there should be a workbench in that area, all those things to promote, because it's one thing to have a bike, but if you can't work on it, wipe it down. So those things will be taken into consideration. All the video cameras and crime prevention, all of those things will be worked in. The access to the parking area is going to be controlled, so the general public can't just go up there and hang out or any drive-through. All the doorways will be controlled, there'll be an outside management company, it'll be onsite management 24/7. So all of those things will be built into and on top of the design that we're creating through the architectural plans.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board, board professionals? Same as on your next witness.
Yes, finally, I'd call Mr. Les Walker for testimony.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Sure, Leslie Walker, W A L K E R.
You swear up and tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do. You give a mind?
Have you, you've got a question, right?
I have been here before and not-
Has it changed at all since last time you appeared before on this board?
No, sir.
I will, except you're-
All right, Les, if you could, again, not to ask you specific questions, but if you can give us an overview of the engineering components that haven't already been touched upon?
The, the good thing about, bottom of the least, these gentlemen is they pretty much covered it all before I got up here. So just, you know, from a site perspective, it's almost all building, right? You have sidewalk, you have the plaza area on the, the north, on the, the Baird Street side, sidewalk, on the, the east side, on Kirkpatrick facing the Civic Square building. And then you have, on the south side, just a driveway entrance where there, there used to be a, a house here, and so we have this small sliver of land just for a driveway.
Leslie, excuse me, could you just turn that a little bit, I, I think several members of them-
You're good?
I see it fine, great.
Utilities, utilities for the site, we're still bringing in our water and our sewer, I'll go out to New Street, but the electric comes in off of Kirkpatrick to the, the two PSE and G vaults that are, that are enclosed over on Kirkpatrick Street. The overhead electric lines that, that currently run along Kirkpatrick and hopefully along Baird, we're looking to, to have them all except the one pole just outside of the, the vault, all those poles removed. There'll be street trees on, on both fringes in, in, in boxes, like tree wells cut into the sidewalk. And then after meeting with Tony after his August 15th letter, we revised the plan, we sat down, we talked about it some more, revised it some more, and I think we're, we're close. We, we collected the, modified the roof, and now we're collecting all the stormwater to go into a manhole at the intersection of Baird and Kirkpatrick, keeping it away from the south, which is where the, the Drift Street problem is. And as it was stated before, it's, it's nearly an acre of impervious coverage that exists today, will exist once the building is constructed and that, that's being diverted away from one of the city's worst flooding areas. And that's really it. I mean, we're providing lighting along the sidewalk, plaza area in front of the retail and office spaces in front for, you know, outdoor seating amenities and, and a nice view from the street. The generator will be tucked in the back of the property. I know there was a, there was a concern from one of the neighbors about some off-site inlets where, where water today would flow. This area right up in here, there's first 90 Baird sits right here, 92 Baird sits right here, and behind them is a parking lot. It's about a quarter of an acre. That quarter of an acre flows to an inlet that sits off the property between 92 and 94 Baird. With this, with this design, you can see this, this is generally roof area that's being carried away and then plaza area that, that's being created and pitched towards the street. So, so where there's over a quarter of an acre going to a little yard inlet over on 94 Baird, that's going to be reduced to about a hundredth of an acre. It's a, it's a very small number. So same thing, there's a small yard inlet off of New Street in the driveway between, that, that runs between the next two buildings, and, and much of the, the existing parking lots kind of flow overlaying to that inlet now. And the roof, the roof just, the nature of the project is that the roof water is going to be diverted, and you have only this little, this little sidewalk area, the generator, and then is some, some gravel or grass, whatever ends up back there, that, that, you know, is the only area that'll, that'll flow off the site. So the, the runoff to that inlet is greatly reduced as well.
And now that you touched on it, just one question, and I believe there was a question from resident with regard to them paying the cost of relocating utilities.
Yeah, we, the note on our plan kind of indicated it that way. There's an existing utility pole out near the corner of our building, and really, I looked at it again today, and the way the wires are connected to 94 Baird, they're not connected off the pole, but instead they, they are teed off the wire down from the pole. So any, any necessary relocation of, of that wire off of that pole to, to facilitate that property will be done in cooperation with, with the, the owner of 94 Baird, but at our cost.
I have no further questions for Les.
Remember, board, board professional, have any questions to this witness?
Do you know how, do you know how the construction of this building is going to affect the water pressure in the area?
You mean, the, the post-construction?
Yeah.
You know, the, the use of the water? We've, we've gone through the DDP and the city water department, um, um, application process, they've reviewed it, and they, they've approved it that, that it's going to be sub, out of there.
Yeah, I would also like to point out that the cap and fees and water connection fees are all being paid in full, approximately $163,000. That's all been posted. The original review of the water lines to feed this building is the fire subco-official then and proposed six-inch line, but we're actually bringing in eight-inch lines. So we're taking advantage of the pressure to the maximum amount that's coming into the building off of the existing system.
So you're not going to need any boosters or anything?
Excuse me?
You're not going to need any boosters or anything?
At this time, there's no proposed pumps or any boosters required. The architect will hire mechanical engineers, those mechanical engineers will review all the systems, and we build out the systems, and we'll do a calculation on what's needed, and then we would have to add boosters if necessary. But that's all going to be product of the building permit application, and the plans will be further developed than what they are right now.
Any other questions, Hans? Same as next witness.
And that completes our presentation.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone from the public, which will speak on this. You come forward, you'll have five minutes to speak, one time. Please come forward, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, thanks, Todd.
Part seats, I'm going to get up. My name is-
I guess where you guys are. Please state your names, spell your last name.
Full name is Catano, Catapano, C A T A P A N O, nickname is Guy.
You swear up and tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Yeah, five minutes.
I am a long-term member of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Conveniently, nobody mentioned the church building and the physical church building and our education building. I am concerned, our church has been here since about 1879, somewhere in that range. So we're closing in on 150 years. We've done a lot of work in this town. Elish's Promise was brought, bought up, brought, birthed out of that church, a lot of other nonprofits. We're continuing to use this building for nonprofits right now. If anything were to happen to this building during construction or any barring of what's going on, we may have to have some of the picked tenants in here leave. We don't know. I don't know yet, I can't tell. Right here is a parking spot, it is the only parking spot that we have, that we use for the past. If I look at some of the diagrams, it looks like this parking spot gets blocked. We don't have access to it. Now, again, I'm just reading the diagrams. We're not against development, don't take us wrong, especially apartments for people that, that need it. Not against the height of the building, none of that. What I'm concerned about is during construction, what's going to be blocked. One of, one of the pieces here talks about construction trailers on New Street, talks about shutting sidewalks, talks about what's going to go on on, on New Street itself, I meant for bridge, on New Street itself as far as blocking and trucks coming in and whatnot. I'm concerned about the number and the, the trucks and the weight and all the construction that's going to go on, what damage is going to happen to that building. It's not a new building, it's built in 50s, okay? And the damage that goes on is only going to hurt the church from a revenue perspective because as are nonprofits, they pay rent, lower than market value, way lower than market value. I don't think any nonprofit will find the space at this rate. That's number one. Number two, if they have to suspend operation because their clients can't come in or whatever, we're going to lose revenue. Church is going to lose revenue. Church sits right over here, built in the 1800s with an addition in the 50s. What are the trucks going to do to those foundations and that building? We've had water problems. This building during a flood on Drift Street served as a staging point for Red Cross. We opened the doors, they came in, and they served all the clients down the block and helped them get housing or whatever they needed to, to get. So we're about serving the community. And so when I look at this stuff, I get concerned about what are the, like, the town, we viewed our sidewalks, we, we put in brand-new sidewalks. The building that was here, the house that was here that was demolished, sidewalk was cracked already from the trucks going in and out. If that happened on a small demolition job, what's going to happen on a major construction site? All right? Again, I'm not talking against the project, I'm talking about the impact of the construction phase. I mean, when it's up and running and all the works are done, same thing. I mean, I heard you talk about telephone, uh, power poles. There's a power pole right here in front of the church that's leaning, it's been leaning for years, leaning for years. Can't get PSE, PSE and G to do anything about it. Still leans. Still leans. If a truck comes through there and hits it, it's going down. All I'm saying is I'm concerned about what's going to happen between day one of construction, demolition, through final construction. And we know these buildings take a lot of equipment, a lot of manpower. I mean, I would hope that we could survive and still continue to serve New Brunswick the way we served in New Brunswick from the 1870s. And I'll say this...
You have one minute left.
The Lutheran Church in New Jersey is looking at New Brunswick as being a good mission development site to help people in New Brunswick. If this goes away, some of the stuff goes away, we may not be able to do that. Anybody got any questions?
I'll respond to that. Thank you, and I do appreciate your comments. Look, everything that you raised is a concern to us, to you, and to the engineering and the building department. And all your concerns have to be addressed. One of the requirements in the engineer's report is to have a pre-construction meeting. At that pre-construction meeting, we're going to have to bring down all the tradespeople, architects, engineers, all of those people to review the plans and to assure that all of the safe measures are taken when we start demolition, when we continue to build, and as a high-rise is going to rise way above your properties. We have to have a logistics plan. That logistic plan has to be approved by the city. It's not just my plan, willy-nilly. There's a lot of precautions that have to take into place. The building that we're going to be building is within 12 feet of your property, the trading facility that you referred to. That's very close, that has to be taken into consideration. One of the things that we will be doing is we will be taking inventory of everything on your building and the surrounding buildings and the conditions of those buildings. We will be installing seismic testing devices to determine if there's been any change in the buildings, there'll be surveying work to make sure that the buildings haven't had any impact by the construction, both before we start construction, during construction, and after construction. We will have to post liability insurances with all the agency, all the contractors will have ample liability insurance. So the whole gamut here is quite intense and it's a quite hard and difficult project to undertake. But you're part of that project and you definitely are going to be taken into consideration because there's some things that aren't repairable.
I will add that, and I speak for, there's our interim pastor Dave Stoner and our president of council Nancy Monford. I will add that we'll be glad to meet anytime, anyplace. If you come with us, we'll show you what we're concerned about, we'll do all of that.
Well, I've been over to your facilities before and I welcome the invitation.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Please state your names, fill your last name for the record.
I'm Dave Stoner, I'm a pastor at Emmanuel, S.T.O.N.E.R.
Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I hope so. Thank you, sir. Guy did a great job of talking about issues, et cetera, et cetera. I'm appreciative of this whole project. If I could have done the math, I'd have been an architect and I could only dream of building a building like this. It's absolutely fabulous. And I hope it can be built by January because, I mean, 300 families, I know 10% of them are going to be members of my church and I am so excited about that.
That's one of the requirements.
Exactly, thank you very much, right in. I apologize that in 1879, when they built our building, they didn't look forward far enough to put parking spaces in. Like that gentleman was talking about, the pastor was talking about his church, they don't have parking spots at all, neither do we. We do have the civic center right next to us that goes right up to our building and we do have Rutgers Art Building that goes right to the back. So our footprint is tiny. Look, if you do a little bit of change, you've got at least 50, maybe 60 more parking spots there. I mean, it just makes so much sense. You have residents, you have opportunities to be able to do more retail or more office. I'm sorry, it's just foresightedness is absolutely fabulous. I am very concerned about the building as construction's going up. I'd be concerned about working out of that building while construction's going up with cranes with, and forgive me, I'm talking way out of my depth. You know so much more than I do. If I have no concerns and no worries about this, then you just let me know and I'll stop fretting about it. It's just, I'm concerned about the people inside and if that's not something I should be concerned about, please let me know. Because I'm concerned about whether or not we should allow people in there. And if we shouldn't, how long is construction going to be that I need to keep them out? How long do you anticipate from beginning to end?
24 months.
That's fabulous. It's not by January, but it's a great time and I think that would be fantastic. But it would be 24 months if my concern is valid, that I need to worry about people inside the building. Again, I love it. I think it's fabulous, I think it's going to be tremendously helpful to New Brunswick. I do have a little trouble with traffic because I leave about four o'clock in the afternoon and that's not a good time to be leaving. But I thank you very much for your foresightedness on this project. I think it's beautiful and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else to come?
Yes.
Please come forward, sir.
Please state your names, fill your last name for the record.
Yeah, Albert Saltana.
Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I swear.
You have five minutes, sir.
Yes, my concern is, first of all, on the sewer plan, it says that 94 is going to be moving the electric utilities for 94 Street and the electric and the rear of the building. 94 should have nothing to do with it.
The lead should be addressed, maybe you didn't get it?
Are you here?
Yeah. It's not your expense, my client's responsible for that.
My other concern is with the driveway between 92 and 94, now we're going to go from a common driveway for a common walkway now, which is eight feet, down to five foot. We had this walkway for a long time, as long as I had it and way before I had it, and I had it since 2005. It's going to break it down, I have six tenants at the back, down to about five feet, five feet three inches. You can't even get two wheelchairs to pass next to each other if something happens. I can't even replace my condensers on the roof to get through it five feet. This building was built in 97, 99 is recent, it's not that old, but you're restricted. There is three feet which is being put in of gravel. Can that be removed and just keep the eight foot there and take away the plants from the front so people have more access going through by tenants at the back?
First of all, the electric line that, it's actually a phone line that runs across our property on your property, is not with an easement and there's no easement there. However, we're not going to take down the phone feed and just leave it there, we're going to seek to with your cooperation, make an application to Verizon, have that phone feed relocated in a different direction so it doesn't cross our property so we can go ahead with the construction. With respect to the...
That's fine, because I saw it in the plan, as it's going to be my responsibility.
No, that was an error on the plan that Les referred to. So we advised everybody today that we will be underwriting that cost. However, you will have to fill out applications and sign applications in order to have that happen. The driveway easement that you referred to expired in 1968.
Correct, yeah.
So there is no driveway easement. The plan is what is shown right now, it goes up to the property line as it does in other places as part of this development and adjoining properties. So that plan cannot be changed at this point in time to accommodate what I think you're asking for.
Well, you have three feet of gravel. You don't have a building right there, just have gravel.
I'm not sure I understand your request.
Well, I mean, there's five, the hole width is eight feet.
You have five feet.
I have five feet three, you have 3.06, right? So in the 3.06, you're putting gravel.
Right.
You don't have the building, you don't have the structure.
Right.
You have three feet of gravel.
Right.
You can't just leave it the way it is so people have more egress.
Or you're saying you want it paved?
Yeah, I don't have it the way it is and I'll maintain it.
I don't have any problem with sidewalking it, paving it, actual gravel, it depends on what the engineer and the engineering department prefer.
Yeah, and you've had it for so many years, so it's...
Actually, I think it should be all new concrete, but I don't know if that will work with the drainage, but I'm amenable to anything that would be improvement and help with your residents having interest in it.
That would be great, that would be great. And also, when it comes to the storm, I was mentioning the stormwater, right? Is it going to be directed towards Bayard Street because I have one drain in the rear, right? And they wouldn't want all the water going there and overflowing, because they'll have nowhere else to go.
Historically, a lot of the drainage on 24 Kirkpatrick and part of 92 flowed onto your property and has always passed. Under this redevelopment plan post-development, virtually none of that drainage will be going onto your property, while the roof drainage will be going into pipes and into Bayard as we had tested.
On New Street, right?
What's that?
On New Street?
No, no New Street.
Okay, all right.
And so the net effect for you is that when the development is completed, you'll have far less water than you presently are experiencing, not more.
Very good. So complete the driveway the way it is, eight feet width, on my tail it.
Whatever the city engineer prefers...
Well, also, we have to make sure it doesn't create an impervious barrier.
It's a walkway, it's a walkway.
Right, so we'll review it if it can't be done.
Right.
This is gravel, okay.
Do you have anything else, sir?
It's a great building, like everybody said, I mean, nice work, I hope we're not such a rathin' of the place. I hope we don't have so many, it will be hard to fit in. But when I hear the pastor say he likes to get his parishioners, A number one.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Charlie Cradaville. Either one's up.
I'm H. R., BDHR, 96100 Bayard Street.
Thank you. Do you swear or tell the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I do.
I'll give you one second to... Proceed.
So I'm an neighbor, and this is a fabulous building, I'm urging the book to support it. It's a size scale that can bring one closer step to a major city south of New York City. The most important thing about this building is that it brings retails and brings pedestrian and brings people in the area that's right now is a lot of ISOs building. It's just not nice driving into Copertini and New Street in that section where all those little houses there and buildings. This is really monumentum and it brings a lot of commerce and people and business to an area that's really needed, connecting the part of Eastern Avenue to the pedestrian in George Street and the medical school into George Street. So I'm urging the board to support it, it's beautiful and it's one more step to make our city and to a great place to be in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Sedam Street. I also, when I'm not working from home or working from the field like I am tonight, I work on this block on Bayard Street. I've previously rented the space at 90 Bayard Street and have many fond memories there. And I do have some questions, so I wanted to ask the construction timeline. We learned it would be 24 months start to finish. When might it start?
Are you asking me, Charlie?
Yes.
By the way, I don't think we owe you any security.
It's before you opened.
We're all good on that. But anyway, the start date would be sometime latter part of next year. The 24-month period would be from construction period, it could be as short as 18 or as long as 24 months, so that was my response.
Thank you, sir. You mentioned the smaller units have a better price point. Is there any estimated monthly rental costs that you can share?
We haven't set that. I can only tell you what we're experiencing in Woodbridge in one-bedroom, they're starting to push up into the 25, 26 range. The two-bedrooms are pushing up into the 35. That's why we're bringing in the studios and the smaller one-bedrooms to try to hold down that. The construction costs are a driving factor, obviously, so we're trying to mitigate that. Also, there's been a big trend in people moving to studios, not only because of the issue of price point, but also they're changing a little bit of their way of living, maybe some people are getting hired, you know, buddy system and they want the private, not so much that they're not working at home anymore, but they want their own workspaces. So we're trying to add that mix into the development plan.
Okay. And just to clarify, there'd be no affordable units, is that?
No, there's none anticipated at this time.
And you already brought it up, I was going to ask about your company's track record with doing housing projects. I don't know of any in New Brunswick that you've developed, but you mentioned you do have one in Woodbridge. I was curious if you could share anything on the one, like the lease-up there and the management? You mentioned you'd have off-site or outside company coming to manage it, is that what you did in Woodbridge and is that working out and is the building full yet?
Well, first of all, our company was founded in our residential, that's where we started and hopefully that's where we'll continue, both with the industrial and commercial. So we have all the elements and the high-rise buildings such as this, taking into account all of those items, sort of retail, office, parking deck, so it has all the parts that we're familiar with. We completed 146 units in Woodbridge, that was a mid-rise, six stories, that had affordable component to it. We had predominantly one-bedrooms there also with studios. The lease-up period was approximately nine months, very quick, rents were increasing, we held them down. Our projects, we look to hold long-term, it's a family business, so we're looking to get tenants that don't stay there for a long time. I'm more interested in a tenant moving in, staying with me until they move on to something else, but we're looking for longevity, we're looking for office and retail users that will continue to stay in New Brunswick and help them.
Thank you. Will the project use the already approved property tax exemption authorized by the city council or will the developer have to reapply now that you've changed the project?
That's a legal question. The pilot's already been approved and that's the expectation that we will continue to use that approval.
Oh, so not seeking reapproval or further approval?
Not now, we don't believe it's necessary.
All right, and I do finally do have a concern about the process, you know...
The what?
The process. So I know that, I think I was here in 2017 when the first approval was granted, and from the developer's application for a long-term tax exemption, I'll just read a sentence here, "On June 19, 2019, Bayard Group LLC received approval for the minor site plan application from the Technical Advisory Committee acting as the Minor Site Plan Committee of the City of New Brunswick's planning board." So I don't want to, you know, put this on the developer, but it seems like the process was this second approval came in a closed meeting, that the public wasn't allowed to be in...
That's what the ordinance and the statute provides for. Minor site plan subdivision. You were there at that meeting.
In the tiny room?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, I will check my records, but I do know that there was some back and forth with the attorney and...
Tell me, are there any other questions concerning this or not?
It's not relevant.
Correct, that's what I was going to say.
We all know about this a little bit.
Because we didn't have it and it's not pertaining directly to this right now. We're moving forward, it's nothing...
I understand, a proper approval in a publicly noticed meeting would make my point moot, but you haven't granted that yet. And the point I'm trying to make is the tack meetings were briefly open to the public for a few months in 2019 and then a change was made.
I'm going to check, what's this got to do with this application there?
I agree.
This wants to rehash old concerns that he's got.
Wanted to use my five minutes to raise the concerns that I thought were most important and...
It would be helpful if they were relevant, but...
It's for this project. I'll just move on and close by noting that... I'll, I'll just move on and close by noting that Middlesex County is on the notice list because they own property within 200 feet. And the top attorney from Middlesex County, Tom Kelso, is here tonight representing the applicant. And I think that that is a conflict of interest and...
Well, you're wrong.
A problem. Is, is he allowed to just keep interrupting me during my remarks? If he wants to make a proper objection, that's one thing, but, you know, he's just inserting commentary.
Just trying to correct you.
Okay. Well, I, I won't take it personally. I hope you don't take it personally. Good, good. Well, I, I will say this. I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Paulus being a witness and answering questions. And thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public portion as, um, worth discussion. I'm sorry. Worth discussing. Anyone have...
I, I think it's a great, uh, plan that's coming. You know, replacing the buildings that have been a little tired, empty lots. But have we considered what, like, the traffic on New Street? It, it's crazy right now leaving work. And if someone walks and watches it.
Well, I, I would, I'd probably be able to respond to that in this way. First of all, we did provide traffic, we did traffic testimony, which really doesn't change because of the number of parking spaces. But I think as you, as you look beyond this project, there's an expectation that you're going to see a traffic signal at the intersection of Patrick and New and Drift from another project that's coming along. And, and so I know that the city's mindful of it and that's an expectation that that signal will go a long way helping from...
Yeah, for everyone expecting that.
Yeah, that's the intersection.
Anyone else coming in? Seeing that, Tom, you want to do a closing?
No, I'll defer to the board.
All right. Thanks. We have a position.
Should the board act favorably? The following conditions shall apply. Compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated September 27, 2023. Submission of all necessary easements across access agreements for review and approval by board attorney and city engineer prior to filing of same applicable. Payment of site performance bonded and not reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount calculated to Title 16.24.160. Water and sewer connection fees, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 13.04 and 13.08. Issuance of road opening permit from the city of engineer required. Slanted terms of Big Mouth Planning Consultants' Report dated September 21st, 2023. Mandatory monetary contribution to see to the city's tree preservation fund in the amount to be required by Title 8.48. Planning escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of any other fees due to the city related with development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. DeAnarchistic Now Commission approval or waiver. Freeway old soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos. Submit architectural plans to comply with any change required by the planning or engineering memos. Execution of a Title 39 parking enforcement agreement. Let's see. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments into the public right of way shall require city council approval. All construction stations shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing to the public right of way is approved by city council. All streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Traffic paths shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction of city engineer. Scheduled pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. And for, I have, for variances, I had the sky plane. And I had as a special condition, the, um, and I don't really know what the best way to word it. I guess it'll be up to Jeremy to sort that out in the resolution. The replacement of the gravel near, that abuts the property line for 94 Bayard with concrete if it's determined that there are no stormwater issues or it would not create a non-conforming, impervious condition. Anything I missed?
I think that's the, you should refer to the lock of variances as well. It's previously approved, but if you're going to refer to the sky plane.
Well, so may I suggest that the vote is not already new variances. It's simply only an amendment to the previously approved...
That's fine.
...application. I think that's probably the simplest and cleanst way. So a yes vote approves this application with the amendment.
And all those car conditions that were put in.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Well, I hope we're rushing past. I got to get to my work. Okay.
Do I have a, a motion with conditions?
I may propose to approve it with prior conditions.
Who's second?
Vote for... Prior variances.
Prior variances, right, yes.
Could I add design waivers?
And waivers.
All right. Michael Felton?
Yes.
Carly Casaneda?
Yes.
Michael Felton?
Yes.
Rex Allen-Tanars?
Yes.
Chuck Dern?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm proud of you.
Other matters of interest for the public? Anyone from the public have anything to say?
Charlie.
Can you floor a pass?
Charlie.
Jay Nutt, close that. Do I have a motion with Derek?
Do you want your motion to... Second.
All fair.
All right.
Good night, everybody. Good night.